...class of 2016 because that's the current junior prom. The first one is next year's junior prom. So.
Do we have a second to the amended, uh, motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnice and seconded by Mr. Casper. He'll approve the contracts in A through H. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Sarnice.
Before we get to the second motion, I believe we have our bond counsel here tonight. Mr. Willard, so you want to fill us in on this?
Good evening. Glenn Willard from PFM and Chris Brewer is also with me. He's your bond lawyer. You have a handout that I'm going to talk from. Several months ago, you authorized us to prepare the paperwork for a refunding of your 2005 bond to wait until May, and so here we are. As part of that process, we get a credit rating for the bond issue. On page number two of the handout, you'll see this is the credit rating report prepared by Standard and Poor's, their independent rating service. They rated you double A, which is a very good credit rating. That's probably in the top one-third or so of what Pennsylvania schools get. In the middle of page two, there's three bullets there just that mentions your strong economy, the sound finances, and the moderate debt levels of the school district. So those are three important things that Standard and Poor's looked at, and as you have time, I would encourage you to read the whole report. The results of our bidding, which was held today in our office, begin on page number We had five different underwriting syndicates bid on the bonds, and the winning proposal was submitted by Jenny Montgomery Scott with a true interest cost of 1.6 percent. So you're borrowing all this money at an average of 1.6. If you skip two pages, page number eight, this is the old bond issue, the old interest rates, you know, on average, call that three and a quarter. That's the old series of 2010. Now, if you go two more pages to page 10, this is the new interest rates. The yield on these bonds are shown in column number four. So again, that's the cost of the new money. And over on the far right, the difference between columns nine and 10 is the benefit of doing the transaction. This is structured so that most of the savings occurs in the new budget year that you're working on. Three hundred and four thousand there in column number 11, and then there's fifteen thousand or so spread out over the next couple of years. So it's a very good bid. I forget exactly what we showed you when we were here before, but I'll say 180 or 200,000, something like that was the range we estimated at that time. So everything is in order. I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, Chris Brewer has the bond resolution for you. Do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. I'm Chris Brewer from Dinsmore &amp; Shoal, and as your bond attorney, it's our job, among other things, to prepare the bond resolution that's listed in your agenda tonight. This document authorizes an occurrence of indebtedness, but as Mr. Willard's already said, in this case, it's really a refinancing so that your debt isn't being extended nor increased. You are instead just reducing your interest rate, therefore reducing your debt service obligation over the same term. This document's been held public inspection. Mr. Cox and Mr. Reed, his partner, have reviewed it, given us comments, and it's in the regular and due proper form for your consideration. It would authorize debt in the amount of $5,840,000, and the terms of the transaction that we've put into this resolution match that winning bid that Mr. Willard's office received today. If you vote in favor of the transaction, we'll proceed to get filings done in the air spurt and move you to a closing scheduled for the end of May. At that time, money changes hands, the old bonds get set up to be paid off, and new bonds come into play. But in terms of interest rates and benefit to the district, if you vote yes, you lock in tonight. Questions for me on the legal side for the resolution? Thank you all.
Just want to point out that we had estimated about 147,000, I guess. So this is great, great news. This will really help our budget situation. Unfortunately, what we've been going through the past few years is items like this where we get one-time, you know, we can scrape by with a one-time benefit, and of course, these don't happen every year, at least not in the future. But I think we've pretty much refinanced our way out of everything, so. But thank you, Glenn, and thanks. This will really help. I guess, so now, this has to be a roll call, though, so, whoops, no, here it is. So the motion is as, is the resolution is in the, is in the agenda, and it's on the first page here, so I'd like to make that motion to approve this.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Sarnice and seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the refunding bond resolution. Comments, questions for board members?
I have a comment.
Yes. Sorry, Mr. Casper.
Now it's not.
Lost you. I believe that I lost you.
Now that we've seen this up here, maybe this could go out on our website. Sometimes when I'm out working or somewhere, we hear comments of how we're inundated and massively crushed by debt in our district. And I think page two of this kind of, and Mr. Willard's comments, you know, kind of, this will be a good thing to get the opinion of the people that write our bonds and the people that monitor Standard and Poor's. You know, when they're telling us that we have moderate debt with limited additional capital needs, I think that's a big thing that the people in our district need to know because our capital expenditures are probably coming to a close in the future, and, not coming to a close, but we don't have any major projects on the horizon. And I'd just like to see this out where everyone can get a peek at. That's my comment.
Anyone else?
I agree with Mr. Casper, and I actually think also our double A rating and the comment here that we have sound finances and good unreserved fund balance, strong tax collection history, and strong cash balance. I think that's something that also should go on. And if we're allowed, we should, you know, take our, tip our hats to Mrs. Johnson for keeping us in this situation the past five or six years because she's done a great job. Thank you, Kathy.
Anyone else? If not, Mrs. Krung, would you call the roll on this motion?
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Demme?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Agomo?
Yes.
Mr. Sarnice?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Yardley?
Yes.
Dr. Yornell?
Yes. Thank you. That motion passes nine zero. Mr. Sarnice?
So the next finance committee meeting will be the combined facilities finance meeting on May 4th.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller, the intermediate unit.
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. We met on April 21st at the IU in Doylestown. Sadly, we received Dr. Barry Galasso's letter of resignation. Dr. Galasso's resignation is a huge loss to our special needs community and the 13 school districts comprising the IU. As Dr. Galasso stated, the BCIU is one of the most successful organizations in the Commonwealth and has been a leadership role since 2007, and I promise you a visit to any of their programs will be a life-changing experience. Also a reminder, please support the May 16 fundraiser for the BCIU, which is held on site in Doylestown. The event is titled Run, Walk, and Roll 5K. In 2014, the event raised $20,000, $10,000 of which was shared with Saratoma, a group helping those with vision and hearing loss. So hope to see you all there. The BCIU graduation is scheduled for June 9th at 6:00 PM at the Bucks County Community College in Newtown. This is a very, again, a very emotionally uplifting experience, and I encourage you to attend, to witness the joy and the trials and the tribulations of the parents. Through presentation, we're reminded of the IU team with Quakertown Community School District, who developed the Bridges Virtual Program, which offers year-round online middle and high school courses. Students remain enrolled in their home district. Teachers are available 24/5, and check support is available 24/7. One segment of the program is credit recovery, which gives a student only the content he or she needs to work on. Another piece of the program offers enrichment opportunities, allowing students to explore and enhance their learning. And last, remediation, which addresses those students needing foundational skills. Entering kindergarten is an exciting time for many of these five-year-olds with special needs. The Bucks County IU plays a very important role in providing early childhood services beginning at age three. During the 2014-15 school year, the BCIU assisted with the transition of close to 900 students from the BCIU Early Intervention Program to local school district kindergarten classes. Board-approved items included revenue transfers, contracts, agreements, proposals, bills for payment, purchases, authorization to submit the 2015-16 Programs and Services/In instructional Materials Budget to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, quite a mouthful, appointment on the solicitor of record, the recommended salary and employee benefit increases for non-bargaining staff, and the second and final reading of policy eight or six child abuse. We also voted on our board members. Our next meeting is scheduled for May 19th, 7 o'clock, at the IU in Doylestown. Thank you, Dr. Yornell.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. We'll move to personnel and policy review committees, and that, both of those will be Mr. Demme.
We have, we have a method, but we will meet again on the policy committee will meet, excuse me, personnel committee is going to meet on May 6th, and the policy review committee is going to also meet on May 6th.
Thank you. We'll move to the Upper Bucks County Technical School Committee. Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Yornell. The Upper Bucks County Technical School Committee met on April 16th. Their meeting minutes are available on their website online. Just a few points. The budget for the 2015-2016 school year was passed with a total of 23 votes from the three sending school districts. Quick update on the construction, they've been under construction now for 39 weeks, 38 are remaining. Completion date is still set for 12/18 of 2015, and approximately 52 percent of the construction is complete. They are an 8.5 percent exposure to the contingency of 765,000. That is as of that April 16th meeting. Total in change orders is $65,685.50. As Dr. Radigan stated, there were several students from Penrich who competed in Skills USA states. The tech school sent 21 students in total, and as, out of those 21, nine of the students sent placed in their competition. John Lee, who was the first-place winner from Quakertown, moves on to the national conference in Louisville, Kentucky on June 22nd through 27th. And the next meeting is scheduled for May 21st, 2015, at 7:30 PM at the Upper Bucks Tech School.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt, and the Act, I'm sorry, technology is next. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, we did not have a meeting this time. The next technology committee meeting will be scheduled as needed. I'm sorry, yeah. I would like to announce that tomorrow is the first meeting of the 21st Century Learning in Penrich, the task force that is being started and run by Dr. Shai and Karen Gish. And I'm really excited about this. I plan to take part in this. I do believe this is something that's really important. It involves the technology and the successful use of technology in our schools, and I think the administration and the board is showing proper appreciation of the importance of this topic by dedicating these, the resources of this task force to look into this, this very important issue. So that's tomorrow, and I look forward to it. Thank you, Dr. Shai, for your ownership of that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Act 48, Mrs. Schmidt?
The Act 48 committee did not meet this past month, but they are scheduled for their next meeting, May 14th at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. And the ad hoc fundraising committee, Mrs. Schmidt and/or Mrs. Yardley?
The ad hoc fundraising committee met on April 15th, and we got updates on the fundraising and had discussed some new ideas, and I have, they're in the minutes, and I have two motions tonight. The first is a motion to approve the following advertising agreements. There are five listed, Sarderton Trucking, Percocie McDonald's, Upper Bucks Orthopedics Associates, A&amp;T Chevrolet, and Dewey Engineering.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mr. Thompson to approve the advertising agreements. Comments or questions for board members? Yes?
I just want to.
I don't believe you're a board member.
I was, pardon. Just to let you know that on the agreement with Percocie McDonald's, that's for two sides. He was the first one, wants one on both sides, so he has a sign facing the home team and the away team.
Thank you. Dr. Levar, anyone else?
Yeah, I was just, I was going to say, and together, so it's, these are our first advertising, advertising agreement, and I believe Mr. Cox wrote the, the contract, so it's been reviewed by the solicitor.
That's correct.
So it's a total of $6,300, and it's for, it's a three-year commitment. They pay in the beginning, and then they can choose to renew. So we still have to bring for a lot more sign.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Yardley?
Okay, the next is a motion to approve a change order to add a memorial wall to the main gate entrance for the purpose of a memorial in, on the inside and the green and white club members on the outside. The estimated cost is $13,000.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Yardley, seconded by Mrs. Schmidt to approve the change order for the memorial wall. Comments or questions for board members?
I just, I have a comment. This is, Mr. Spatafore had a drawing for it, so we went with that drawing, and the, Mr. Snyder is from the class of 54, who's spearheading the memorial for the veterans, for the men who lost their lives in service to the country. As it says in one part, will be on the inside, the memorial will be on the inside of the stadium, and then we're going to put the green and white club sponsors on the outside. So it's all coming from fundraising dollars, but half of it will be coming from the, the group that's raising the money for the memorial. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Not? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Yardley?
Yes, the next ad hoc fundraising meeting is scheduled as needed.
Thank you. Unfinished business by board members? Not? New business?
Yes.
Mr. Demme?
Mrs. Miller brought up, thank you, Dr., Mrs. Miller brought up the fact that Dr. Galasso has announced his resignation. He has, in my view, and I think a number of others, had a pretty significant, had a pretty significant impact in behalf of this district, and I'd like to propose that we consider something from the Penrich School Board that recognizes his contributions.
I certainly concur. I had the privilege of serving in the intermediate union for two years, and Dr. Galasso, I think, is a true leader. He has done really remarkable work in an institution that's large and far-reaching. He has pulled in clients from various parts of Pennsylvania and outside the state, even the city of Philadelphia, and they actually paid him for the work that he did, which to me was remarkable in and of itself. But he has been able to decrease the budget to a degree pretty much each and every year, which is a remarkable feat, especially during the recession.
Long creative services.
Yes. And at the same time, he manages a very, very large budget. It's about $135 million a year, so it's quite an extraordinary effort. I'm sure no one is irreplaceable, but his shoes will be hard to build. So I think we, I agree with Mr. Demme that we should try to do something to express our appreciation as, on behalf of the district.
And I, I don't know whether we want to decide it here tonight, but we ought to do something. I had the opportunity to work with him for a couple of years, and I think he did a, did an outstanding job in, when we had a significant person on the ship, inviting a new superintendent.
Anyone else care to comment on this? Oh, if not.
You know, I, I agree. I think it's great. I worked with him for four years when I served on the IU, and he is a, he's a great man and a great leader.
So I guess board members ought to get together and decide on what we would like to do that would express our appreciation. Should we, we will be leaving, I leave June 30th, or, I'm sorry, maybe September, right?
I thought it was September.
September. So we do have a little time to make that decision.
Maybe we ought to turn this into the ad hoc committee.
You get to chair it.
Substitut.
Mr. Demme.
Whatever.
Any other new business?
Yeah, I just want to remind people that tomorrow night is a lovely evening sponsored by the Penrich Community Education Foundation, and the group is honoring Dr. Levar and Nancy Martin, who's a life skills teacher at Central Middle School, and the late Bud Hoplinbuck. So doors open at 6:30, so if anybody's interested in attending, it's a, it's a great night. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? If not, we'll move to announcements. The next regularly scheduled Penrich School Board meeting is to be on Monday, May 18th, 2015. It will be at 7:30 here in this room at the high school. There were Peasman negotiations held on April 1 and 14th, and PEA negotiations held on April 15th. There is an executive session that will follow tonight's meeting for the purpose of both negotiations and personnel matters. At this point, comments from guests? Name, municipality? Mrs. Harrow.
Good evening, Diane Harrow in Hilltantashia. In reference to Mr. Thompson's conversations regarding 21st Century Learning, I have attended board meetings for a very long time now, as most of you know. I sat here two years ago, and I actively campaigned for the introduction of one-to-one laptops. I subsequently sat through last year, and at no point did it occur to me to ask the simplest of questions. Would we be purchasing the same machine? To my surprise, when my children came home as incoming freshmen this year, the laptop that they received was significantly different than those doled out the first year. I have again heard people ask the question, are we going to discuss the laptop that we're purchasing, leasing, whatever variation of it is? I don't hear that discussion. I've attended curriculum committees, it's not there. We don't seem to have technology committees with any regularity. I don't understand how we can be building a one-to-one technology program when we don't have the same machine. And if a kid's machine goes down in one grade, they get doled out a laptop and a different one. As comparative, let me inform you that the laptop you were all sitting at and looking at that makes it so easy to read is about the standard size that the 10th grader was issued. The 9th grader was issued an 11-inch screen. I encourage you all to take a ruler to the laptop that you have and look at how big, or shall I say how small an 11-inch screen is. I'm not really quite sure how we actually are spending the money we are with physics with all these technology bells and whistles, and the screen they're looking at is this big for the model and how they're learning from it. So I hope in light of tomorrow evening, we might actually make some headway to have a machine that we decide on, instead of going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth, so that we have some consistency and a plan and some strategy about where we're going with all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrow, and thank you for the donation. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. I'm Mary Lou Takowski. I'm a Percocie resident. I've been a Percocie resident since 1998, and I'm a teaching assistant at South Middle School. I've been a teaching assistant there since 1999, and I just wanted to let you know, as I have in the past, that all of the Penrich teaching assistants appreciate the great amount of time and efforts that you have given to the negotiations, and I'm asking you to please continue to support the teaching staff and the teaching assistants as we continue to support our students. And I believe that we also are a daily benefit to the Penrich School community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Takowski, and there are two more negotiation sessions scheduled in early to mid-May. Anyone else? Mrs. Brewer?
Sue Farlong, West Rock Hill Township. You all encumbered the district by another, I don't know, $5 million tonight, is that right? Did I understand that correctly? No? Okay, so.
Existing issue, so it's no additional encumbrance. In fact, the district will pay less over the remaining years on the ball.
Okay. I would like to clarify, I don't know that some of the board members, well, maybe you do and maybe don't, but anyway, I was reviewing the previous bond issuance that this district did a few months ago, well, back in May of 2014, and I compared the annual reports for projected future debt service, meaning principal and interest, and I compared what was reported at the end of 2013 with what was reported at the end of 2014, 13 to 14. And what that accomplished was that it moved about $2 million out of the next couple of years repayment. You're not paying the, all of the interest, and some of the principal was moved, kicked down the road, as some people say. So that was $2 million. You borrowed $10 million, and the borrowing is not being repaid, the principal, for several years. So you have a balloon payment coming in about five years from now. It's going to be a $5 million balloon in one year, and then the rest of it stretched out. The final way of looking at it with what you did, the obligation between 2019 and 2029 increased by $14 million. The detail was not given so that I can tell you year by year, but in that 10-year span between 13 to 14, the district lightened the load for these next four years. So if, you're like some of the board members here that have older children, they will go through the system, and cash will be no problem. If you happen to be the parent of a younger child, by the time that child gets to high school, they will be repaying the debt that we incurred, plus the principal that we deferred, plus the interest on the interest that that last arrangement brought forth. So like I say, in that 10-year span, the principal and the interest has increased by $14 million, plus Peasers, whatever's going on with that. I'm just concerned that we're living for today and not doing any long-term planning financially.
I just wanted to clear the record up on one thing, and Mr. Brewer's going to correct me if I misstate anything, but as a result of the market's determination that the school district has sound finances, highlighted by good unreserved fund balances, a strong tax collection history, strong cash balance in the capital reserve fund, all the district did tonight, and it didn't extend its debt, it just traded in more expensive bonds for lesser bonds, which results in savings in the next budgetary cycle of approximately $300,000. So contrary to how you initiated your remarks, what the district did tonight saves it a pretty good chunk of money in the short term and strikes me as a no-brainer, frankly. So I wanted to clarify.
All right, let me clarify then. On the last one, what happened was that by delaying repayment of the principal and what they call capitalizing the interest, which means you're not paying the interest right away, you roll that in, we end up paying $2 million more on a $10 million debt. So I don't know exactly how that happens, but the whole principal amount is delayed repayment for five years, and so that interest is accruing on the total amount instead of an amount that is getting paid down, and that comes at a price. I haven't seen the structure for tonight, so I hope that what you're saying is correct.
It is.
Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, comments or questions from the press? Nope? Thank you very much for coming. The meeting is adjourned.